So, everybody will go ahead and call the people to order.
Sorry.
Yeah, that need to be worked on. I've been working on it for three years. You can't blame them anymore.
I swear it's getting worse.
We could, uh, review the agenda. Has anybody got any changeless additions? They were locked in my. Clear none. Good review of last meeting's minutes. Any changes to those?
Probably need to change an unfinished business. We're saying the proposed changes in regard to 159.56 and NCGS 4730. But we can't change that.
Say it again.
NCGS 4730. They'd reword that somewhere there in where it says in regard to, changes in regard to 159.56 and NCGS 4730. Because we can't change that.
We can change that. We probably might as well. It's good.
You gotta keep this recommendation out.
That, that has been removed. Any other changes? If not, an entertaining motion to approve. I'm going to second. All voters say aye. Aye, opposed.
He's out of town.
He didn't ask me to come in and be liaison today. I just had to pass by for a liaison report if I don't see it's next year. Merry Christmas and stuff like that.
Um, Pope, come in. Yeah, let's get into your reserve and finished business. It's a lot where a view business minimum lots size for phase development. We talked about that just a little bit.
The, uh, I went in and researched Jackson County and Haywood County. Haywood County does not mention anything about minimum number of lots. Jackson County did, uh, each lot, she contained at least six lots. And then they got a big description on them. Basically, Jackson County, six lots, at least six lots. The only thing I thought maybe we can come with maybe reducing somewhere around five or six.
How does it stay with county?
It says, um, the only thing they define is in a minor subdivision and a major subdivision, sort of in their definitions. Definition for minor subdivision is the proposed subdivision land where four to 10 lots will be developed after the subdivision is completed. One phase of planned development cannot be considered a minor subdivision unless the entire development does not exceed 10 lots or dollars in change. So they're basically saying four to 10 lots are minor phase. That technically, uh, those minimums is four.
Is there being disadvantage to you or us as a county to say four, you know, four lots in a phase development? I've seen them where they'd be two or three, but I think they probably live with four. I'll make my motion again. I'd make a motion to do it. Say that four lots consistently in phase development. Four lots over if you can phase in there four lots.
So you're saying four, four over. Minimum of four.
Minimum of four.
Per phase.
Per phase.
Second, do that.
To you either way, I was, not to over eyes you or anything, but what, I was sort of thinking of a minimum of blank lots, let's say four lots, being divided from the current track. That way it keeps the current track.
We want to keep the fact, yes, I agree with that. I don't want nobody using the phase subdivision to go in and do a large subdivision, four lots at a time. No. And we don't, we don't want to say that they have to be configured. We say that that can be.
Culminatory between.
That's a, wherever.
On that, right.
On the path.
On seven.
So we've got a road. Is there gonna be any consideration given to, if you're gonna phase it, does the planning department need to see the intent of the entire subdivision, um, at the time that phase is submitted? I know there's language in there right now with the phase development.
Right.
Uh, that says that a preliminary class for the whole subdivision needs to be submitted with that first phase.
What, what's the master plan?
So the master plan's still gonna be tied to the, to the phase development?
It's gotta have something, I think, so.
But am I changing that or making a motion that we have? But you're not gonna hold them to that.
No, that's just the plan.
As you build roads and as you go through it, probably a lot of things.
That's just the plan.
Yes, and that's what you hope.
You might ask them to stay.
There's absolutely no change tremendously because you didn't get a road with that. You could.
We don't know what you're into.
So I'll make the motion that four lots is considered phases.
Four lots.
And minimum of four lots minimum is a phase. So you can do a 100 acre subdivision with four lot phases. So what all, what, can somebody say that for me and then let's talk back?
I'll say. Yeah. You do want to include the minimums, right?
Yes. And again, where does it, what, what effect does this change have? Does it have any effect on the definitions as they stand in the ordinance or the minor subdivision or?
Well, I think we're gonna have to go back and.
That's what I was wanting to do, yeah.
Uh, since all these changes we've made.
And see what kind of effect that, that this will have on what we have, because it could have an effect.
What definition you, you have.
Well, what does this do?
We're gonna have to define phase development, but I don't think it's gonna change it.
So if you got, if I've got a minor subdivision, hypothetical situation.
Now, this, what I'm talking about now only applies to major subdivisions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not if it's four lots, because your major subdivision's anything over eight lots.
Oh, that's by definition.
Any, any definition?
A phase subdivision is automatically a major subdivision.
Subdivision, that's a minor subdivision.
I'm not changing that. All I'm asking is if you have a major subdivision, that you can phase it in four lot increments. That's it. We're not talking about minor subdivision.
And with the minor, there's a limitation. You can only subdivide one, you cannot subdivide for another year. So if it was a phase development, if you want to subdivide again, if you want to sell more lots before a year, you have to call it the major subdivision with phases rather than a minor.
So if I had that six lot subdivision, then the, the phase option wouldn't be available to me if I wanted to sell, if I wanted to say, I've got six lots, but I'm just gonna cut out two right now, then I'd be prohibited from selling another one for a year because I'd be classified as a subdivision.
Unless you, unless you want to put all your roads in. If you go ahead and get all your roads into every lot, then you can sell them. Am I right in that?
Yes. But now, we're still gonna be faced with the situation where if I want to create a minor subdivision of seven lots, then I don't have the option for fates. If I've got a seven lot subdivision.
You're either major or.
And I just wanna cut out two, then I don't have a face option.
Well, yeah, you become, you become.
Unless you want to.
Yeah, you could go under the stipulation of a major and then phase it at, at four lots at a time.
If a, well, if I don't have, I guess if I don't have over eight lots in a road that exceeds 1,320 linear feet, then how could I be classified as a major subdivision?
Because you want to phase.
Because you want.
Well, that's not, you, then that's not, that's not contained in the ordinance, so we're going.
Which has not been subdivided within the previous year.
Right.
And then that definition of mine.
Well, what if it hasn't? What if I have, but I want to do seven lots right now, but it hadn't been subdivided in the previous year? So I've got less than eight lots and my road's not exceed, does not exceed 1,320 linear feet, so.
So you're a minor subdivision.
So how, so I can't say I wanna be, I wanna phase this because I only want to do two lots. I can't say that.
As a minor subdivision, is it requirement, in a minor subdivision, that you have all your roads in before you sell?
Yeah.
Firstly, I, I want to see this changed because I want major developers to be able to go in and do four lots and sell land to recoup some of their money and then be able to go do four lots. If you're a minor subdivision, I don't see the problems that you have in a major subdivision with that. Because a thousand foot of road or 1,300 foot of road is pretty.
Pretty long.
Will it be that long?
Yeah, but at eight lots, are you gonna be 1,300 foot of road? Long? Well, you could. It all depends on, it depends on if it's mountain land and there's a lot of, a lot of land to go into it. I, I was just trying to think about it. Probably make changes with that mission.
Would it work to add on a phrase which have not, uh, and cannot be subdivi, has not been and cannot be subdivided within a one year period, if you like that?
Would it, would it be, would there be anything wrong with a minor subdivision doing two phases and they got eight lots and they're doing two phases and left them a five and same? We could add language to where they can do four lots, just like.
Yeah, I mean, I think, but.
Why don't we do that?
Because again, I think that in the, the intent of the phase development is to allow developer, whether a major, a developer, whether in a major subdivision or a minor subdivision. I mean, if I've got a seven lot subdivision, but like, um, you guys were talking about last time, the estate lots that are a little bit bigger and I just, I, I don't want to bite off the whole chunk right now. I want to build me a spec home with a, a road to it and, and kind of get, take the temperature of the market and, and see if I can sell this home, then I should be able to do that in a minor subdivision or a major subdivision, as long as at the end of the day, in each of them, I have a road that meets the standards of the subdivision ordinance and all the other provisions of the subdivision ordinance, regardless of how many lots that I want to put in it. As long as what my product, at the end of the day, meets the subdivision ordinance, whether it be two lots or 150 lots, as long as we get across what we're trying to get across. And that's put these standards in.
I agree with Derek and I'd like to amend my motion to include this, uh, minor subdivision.
So phase developments, just that one all applied? Everything in phase developments would apply to major and minor?
Yes.
If you're gonna do that, why don't you need a minor? As long as you're studying different phases and do a lot of that. Well, I've never worked for a professional developer and gone to do four lots and couldn't even just, uh, get there.
But that'd keep you from having to keep the mix up and, but would it be, would it be easier?
I think the benefit of that tomorrow is probably some of the bonding.
And the only, and also the minor.
We're wanting to cut out everybody, but we don't want this professional developers in here. I mean, someone wants to develop their property and they had never done it, they don't have to be a professional. I know, but they'll use to be a small scale. That's what I'm saying. So. That's the reason we need to.
There's a lot of, I agree.
Right, with the minor.
Well, the minor, you're not, the, the major differences, I think, in the minor and the major, the minor, you're not bringing in the technical review committee. You're not requiring, uh, the sketch plan.
It's energy hours, what it is.
Yeah.
Which a lot of times in minor, preliminary, final, it's the same.
Yeah, you don't, we don't require, you don't usually look, you're usually, when you look at a final, uh, platform, major, you're looking at the final. You know, you're not looking at it, so it's.
So you're just like applying that to a major and a minor will satisfy that need?
I think it'll apply to a major and a minor, but I think we need to leave the definitions for each in place because, like Matt said, the minor is a little bit, uh, less of a strenuous process for the person that's not a professional.
Right.
Is, is that technical review committee really the only difference?
Pretty much.
That, on sketch plan?
That, the preliminaries and sketch plan, but the technical review committee, it's usually a challenge.
Yeah.
So can I amend my motion to include the minor subdivisions in the four, four lot minimum phases of? Say it again. I want to amend my motion to include the minor subdivisions in the four lot minimum for the phase developments. In, in doing that though, if you're doing a minor subdivision, you're doing a minor subdivision, my subdivision's gonna have seven lots. So I've got, in the first phase, I'm gonna have to do at least four.
That's correct.
Because, I mean, when you start talking that, I mean, on a minor subdivision, that may only be 400 feet of road if you had, you know, 200 lots, 200 feet wide and you had them on both sides.
If you wanted to do it on fates, you could do four lots and sell.
Right.
Whereas right now, you couldn't. You'd have to do all set up.
Right, no, 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 I just want to make sure I can pull up fates two or three lots. For continuity. Well. He just made a good point. What if all of a sudden, I've got a seven lot subdivision I'm doing? I'm gonna do four in my first phase.
Can't do four in second.
There's only three lots left.
What do you do?
I, I know, but, but you might need to put the language in there, four lot, minimum of four lots or remainder of lots left or something. Because it could get very technical later on if somebody wanted to make a. To do that, but I'm just, there's some people out there that might try that. Do that square. You mean you, John? No, I'm definitely not the one. Or Bill. Yeah. He's the one leading back off.
Do you want to say four or three lots or more since the, the minor subdivision is the three to eight lot?
Well, I say a four, because that's a good minor subdivision of eight lots.
And it says that some language that would say that it could be less than four, if it was the remainder of lots.
Right.
There's two left or something. Order of remainder. The remainder. The last base.
Yeah. Cause that's his last claim. Or not.
Yep.
I'm not requiring that you have, I'm not asking to require that you have four lots to do a phase subdivision. I'm requiring that you must, it's a minimum of four lots to do a phase subdivision. You can do one lot after that if you want, but you still gotta have four. Right, but you gotta have that language in here to reflect that.
And that, that will bring in a new requirement, uh, to the minor subdivision or potentially, we're, right now, we don't require a preliminary or a master plan for a minor subdivision. Are you gonna look at, uh, if you're gonna allow a minor subdivision to do a phase development, are you gonna also allow them, uh, make them have to bring in a master plan as well?
Well, since phase development requires a master plan, I mean, that's under a phase development.
I think if you choose to phase well, then I'll tweak the language. Want to amend your amendment?
I tried to amend my thing.
Oh, you just, we're, the draw up and start all over. So. I mean, I still, I still stand on my motion to amend it to do four. We can not, you can do a phase subdivision with four lots and apply that to the subdivision. Now, if y'all want to talk about adding language, in case somebody's got three lots, to me, that's a different subject.
I'd just like to see how it comes out of the offer. When everything's put, where we're gonna put it.
You're gonna, Jim, you'll have to move it out of the procedures for review for major subdivision, one type of phase development.
Yeah.
Do I tell you it's all?
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, to be honest with you, if they want to do a small subdivision in phases, in phases, I'm, I'm about ready to say that they ought to have to do the same thing as you do in a major subdivision, as far as having paperwork, their master plan, the whole thing. Because we're giving you an avenue to do something. Partly you're gonna do it here, once you go to phase development. Yeah. That's why I said it. I mean, if you come in and you got a small subdivision that's eight lots, so you can say, I want to do this in phases, well, we got to have something on paper to show what this phase is in the beginning.
So can't we just make A, B, C, and D a phase development supply to both major, to any phase development, both major? 159.5.
I think you just move it under the general provisions.
Just put it under general.
159.55. I think that ought, if you want to do a phase development, that ought to apply to a minor subdivision as well. Under general provisions. I mean, by, by making them required to, to follow the same rules as a major subdivision, we're not gonna encourage, uh, phase development in a minor subdivision. So we, I think they ought to have to follow the same technical rules. If you're gonna do fates. Which, which, which is 159.5.
Well, then, uh, if you know, and then if they got, if they want to do four lots, just let them do it under the major and then designer.
And that's where I'm. Not really that, not really helping anything.
Make them either partner on the management.
Does that, or I could ask them minor? Jay, that was one of my points, is I don't want to encourage a minor subdivision to do phase development. I just want to offer them the option.
But a minor subdivision, you can't, you could do a minor subdivision and do phase development under minor, but you just gotta do them a year in between, right?
Right. Or do multiple minor. If that's what they do.
But then their subdivision don't get in, so you don't want the.
Right.
If you do a phase development in a minor, right now, you're doing, uh, different minors. You're doing separate minors.
So, under the definition of minor subdivision, do we just need to add something about it is not phased? And that way that kicks you in the major?
If the, if the only difference is the technical review, if they want to do a minor, if they want to do a subdivision that would fall under minor, but they want to do it in the phases, they're just gonna have to step up to the major. The only difference is the technical review, so it's just a time. And, and let's leave it at that. Let's just try and recreate.
That's a good, good point.
If a man wants to do a, a minor, he's gonna do it under the original document. If he wants to do, to accept four, that'd be a phase.
Do we need to say it is not phased in the minor subdivision or is, is that not necessarily?
I think that's good. I think that's what you need to, that's where you need to change it.
Just add.
In the definition.
Minor subdivision's not phased.
Say that, minor subdivision's not phased.
Well, that can't be phased development.
So we don't have to do.
You don't really need to do anything. But now, that, by saying they're not phased, that's gonna give people in the minor subdivision the option to still have less than eight lots, but phase it, but that, that wording is what will kick them in and allow them to do the phase process under the major subdivision rules by putting not in there.
The definition, I can't believe the phase government, a phase development is defined as a major subdivision that will be constructed in phases with a minimum of four lots and subdivided from the parent.
Now, I, I would leave that because that tells you it's a major, and then if they want, on minor, you can just say a minor subdivision is defined as a subdivision containing no more than eight lots and, and is not, and does not contain phases. Isn't that what you were saying?
Yeah, just adding on that phrase.
And then if they do phase, it kicks them into the same thing as a major, except for the, uh, review.
It's, it's literally not.
He's doing the review.
He's doing the review.
Well, if they, if they want to go that far, they ought to. They ought to go.
Yeah.
So, Jimmy, your motion on the table, because that's the title idea.
Yes.
You have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? On the table? Okay. Well, that being said, we need now look.
Make a motion to change their definition.
Change the borders under minor.
And at the end, just put, which is not done in fates, which is not a phase development.
Yeah, and does not include phase development.
Yeah. You just need to add that.
Yeah. And I'll make that motion, does not, to add, does not include phase development.
I'll say.
Any more discussion? Any discussion left? Not? On the table?
Aye.
Poked.
Much as it is now.
That's it for that? Uh, 159.02.
What'd you tell me, Mike, about that, the statutes?
About 159.02? The first two sentences come straight out of the general statutes. Where it starts off, it says, also designed to provide the county commission planning board, planning department. From there on, is all stuff that's gonna add on previous authors. In the one, two, three, four, fifth line.
Well, there's your rub on that.
It is also designed to provide county commission. That's, that's the addition. So.
I don't know that I had one.
Certainly would. So I think what's up for discussion is from, it is also from that point forward.
I don't even see why we need anything after it also. I mean, it's doing it anyway. Why does it have to be said?
How is any of this helping to project the need of the various public programs? Cause if they're projecting, that they're behind if they haven't, because now we're building it. Once they're here doing it, I mean, it, they're not projecting anymore, it's, it's real.
The problem's looking for patterns.
Well, you've got, we've spent a year.
Don't look at 2008 before. Oh, I know.
Compared to land used, playing. Yeah, comprehensive.
Land used.
Playing. So we can do that. I think, I think that this, you still keep the, the Excel spreadsheet that tells the sub, the type of subdivision, number of lots created, and the community that it's in? I think that if there's ever a way that we could tie, uh, I think this would be effective if we could tie the spreadsheet that is now being done, uh, internally by the planning department that tells every subdivision that comes through that department, it tells the type of subdivision, the number of lots that are created, and, and the, uh, the location, the community. I think if there's any way that we could ever tie that spreadsheet to the GIS system, then that would certainly, and then say for 2011, all the 2011 subdivisions are blue, the lots that are created are blue, and you do an overlay, and you can see by those blue lots overlaid throughout the county where your development was occurring. I think that, I think that's, I think that's sort of why they say that it's projected growth.
Well, if you wrote this back, why didn't you implement?
Estimated for growth.
And that would be a very valuable.
I got a D on.
From the outside looking, we're able to possibly develop where they're gross. That's how they think. I mean, they don't just throw a dart in a map and say, well, this is the here league, there's a tremendous amount of opportunity, it's professional. Another thing with that is when, like, they'd say, John, with Wildflower. When it was developed, there was a part, you remember how many, Mountain Valley, Calwe, thought over who was gonna be the what? And they did a substitution. That's held true.
I think it's nice to have that in there simply because it, it, it widens the, the scope of, of what the mission of having this information is. It's not just to get the developments to read and permit it, but it is also to provide information to the young.
Okay, so, so give me an example of how you're doing it now.
Derek's paper, they were gonna.
I gotta see on that, but.
As far as projecting, as far as projecting growth, as far as projecting growth, revenue and expenditures, I mean, certainly with property tax being the primary source of revenue, that, that is directly hinges on the number of lots created. I think if you could ever find a way to tie this to the GIS system, as far as.
I think if you could ever find a way to tie this to the GIS system, as far as projecting growth, revenue, and expenditures through the services that you're going to have to provide to those lots as well as the revenue they create, I think you can do that with this, but you just want to find a way to do it.
This is just a piece of the pie.
Right, but this at least sets a goal to work toward.
What do you think about? Well, we're called quite frequently by different agencies or organizations or individual investors. See where the growth is in making it. Here's, for instance, when they were discussing with the legal factors, consultants were calling, you know, how did this bad? That area, we don't know if the development was recorded in that area. So to know that there was no development going on with that area anyway, the answer to one of their questions was, do you believe the vibe, the water of more development? Say that, not that. So we track that anyway. If there's a purpose of this ordinance, so be it.
Well, if it's a purpose of this ordinance, then we need to put some language in the ordinance saying that you have to track the growth and map where it's at. I mean, that's not in here.
He obviously didn't do good.
We're talking about how you use the information, and that's in there.
They're used to it, it's wild, whatever, but developers are still alive, they've got a hell of a lot somewhere.
But, you know, I want to make sure that the decision makers, the policymakers understand, I mean, you know, why run the storyline out, say, south or something, and your growth is headed north?
Because this is designed for information, and it is providing information. I mean, the information is there for those to.
Well, what's it got to do with subdivision?
It shows you where the growth, that's the only way you can.
The growth's going to be where the subdivision is.
I know, that's why you need to chart.
If somebody has to know about.
But I think that this, with this, the way this is worded, it gives administration the flexibility to be able to do these things and explore these different programs. If you start going in here, and, or not different programs, but different ways to track this growth, it gives flexibility by not going through and stating every little thing that we want to do it by, by leaving it open. It gives Matt the ability to work with Justin and say, well, I think we could do this, and maybe take this from a spreadsheet and overlay it here. I mean, if you put a procedure you have to follow in here, it's just going to, it's going to add another layer of bureaucracy into it.
Well, you're one of the factors, or that you're going to have that information, I'm like. It's going to be in the county record.
Well, what does it hurt to say that it's this, by complying with this ordinance, you're helping to provide that information?
Well, I don't know that it hurts anything, but I just can't say that it needs to be that. I don't know, I mean, you know, I'm just, no country boy, don't know much of that.
Yeah, it is, so it's in the subdivision ordinance, so is that the only place we're concerned about growths, is where subdivisions are and not where commercial property? That's what I'm saying, so are we only, are we as a county only going to track subdivisions?
Technically, this does, like, commercial property.
But it says it's also designed to provide the county commission, the planning board, the tax check, the planning director. Well, that's in here and off, when a subdivision's done, you're going to have that information.
Yeah, you are. And you guys, if y'all wanted to implement something like Derek's talking about, and like Jack's talking about. No, that's not. I mean, to gather, y'all have the data, okay? To put the data in a readable format so the county commissioners can understand what they need to do as far as future fire departments and future waters, schools, all that good stuff, if it's available, y'all have to just do it. So, it doesn't need to be in there?
I don't think so. No, I'm jacked. I don't know that it hurts anything, but it just don't seem like part of subdivision.
I mean, y'all can do everything that that thing says anyway without this, right? And you should.
I have a motion, Derek. Since you've got a C on it, here's your chance. I think there, I already got a C on it. It's got a lot of point. If it's, unless it's hurting something, leave it in there. If it's perceived that it gives the department some way to provide information, as long as it's not hurting something along the way, I don't know. I don't know why the county will believe in that. But if somebody feels strongly that it doesn't need to be in there because it's hurting something or put another roadblock up and prevent something from happening, but it seems like what C-Nas tells, that it's put there in order to give them a little bit more latitude to provide the information, not the implementation of anything, but just to provide you with information.
I don't see how taking it out would really push that latitude. But I think that, I think that keeping it in reinforces that you have that latitude.
It also sort of tells the person complying with all this that, you know, this information is useful and valuable, it's not just to make things difficult for you.
I just asked a question, I didn't complain.
You're the one that you put stuff in the trash.
He's talking hard though, trying to get out.
We should, we should.
So, in my opinion, the purpose, our definition, is the reason for this ordinance. It's a secondary definition, it's the reason. Why did we create a subdivision? And this is about, we can track it now, we can use this information now. Before we had a subdivision ordinance, we didn't know what subdivisions were until somebody came up with a little bit of application. They offered a house on Butterfly Hall subdivision. Well, I don't have a clue what that is, where is it? It's about 200 lots subdivision up here on, $100? I'm telling you, so. But it, the reason for this is, why did we create this? This is why I created the ordinance, this is why we have this. And this, that's just my reasoning for it. With or without an ordinance, it's going to do the same thing. Derek seems to think that with this in here, it might give the county some attitude to use that information without as an permission through the GIS program or something like that. Whereas if we don't have this here, and we ever want to use that overlay on the GIS so we can see where the growth is, and GIS department said, we wouldn't have to do that. Give me some, get the commissioners to tell me to do that, and we'd be glad to do it.
Need to fire that guy, Jack.
Yeah.
Go where the water and sewer is, and one day, in this, just in the spirit of cooperation, working with the county and the town that is over the water and sewer. I mean, our county is able to bring and produce a map to the town that says, look at the growth that's occurred in this section of the county. This is why we might need to look in and discuss bringing water and sewer, we can, we're provided with that, you know? Does that wording leave too much latitude? I mean, it doesn't spell out anything necessarily, which you say is a good thing, and I can see where that might be the case, but does it provide too much latitude for it to come in and do, I don't know what, but you never can tell.
I don't, I don't see the threat of that.
So what's the question?
I made it to adjournance, so I'm making a motion to leave it like this.
I say that, we don't have to bother on anything we're not changing, so. Let somebody get some.
Well, I'm fine, I've gotten into that conversation.
Couple, couple other, couple other quick things. This conclusion review of subdivision warrants at Loudwood to the county attorney for review. Could we just say that you would keep up the promise of any changes that the county attorney.
And then he's going to add whatever necessary definitions are.
There will be a copy of the FOC report sent out.
What I will do is change everything we talked about tonight. Everything deleted, highlighted, all that, almost in that chest. We have a copy of that, we will.
You'll keep that.
Absolutely.
That's a good answer for all of us.
Can you, you can also add that?
Yeah, there you go.
There's some wording that we added, definition wise, is he going to take care of that? Design professional, for example?
But we get a review of it before against the county.
I think it's more of a courtesy, not to say this is what you said, if you want. I think that's more of a, it's not something open like that.
Discuss, yeah, we like to see it before. Last time there was some planning committee that went through the county commissioners, it didn't happen.
The issue that Jimmy's talking about, for those of you that weren't here, is there's always some words that went into big change by the attorney, but there was some concern on a lot of people's part that the intent was changed. And I think that's why we're going to watch that and work to do it, look at it and make sure that that intent was changed.
And if it does change, I think we stop saying go into the county commission?
It's those who change, but it's basically giving you a courtesy.
All right. So we're at the mercy of a lawyer again. At the mercy of your county commissioner.
Yeah, you could, if he changes something you don't like, you could go to the meeting and bring it up to the commissioners. That's not how I, as a planning board member, meant when we voted, and now it's free.
I think that we're all waiting on the different sort of rule at this point. Vote from the same point of the county commissioners and from the county attorney. At this point, the county attorney, A, has been at our meetings, B, has been ready and available for any questions that we might have. So I think that, I think that the difference being, last time perhaps, that was reviewed and wasn't actually asked for in the input, I think.
That's right.
What we have from ours, with the county attorney pick up and say, you know, what's this?
So I don't, I don't really like the idea of, when you go on the planning board member tab, it's hard to go in front of the county commissioners and take that hat off and make it sound. So when you go in there and talk to them and you disagree with something that we've all agreed on, then you're actually speaking for the planning. And I just, I don't agree with, and I would never do it, I don't, I'm not going to take this ordinance that we all agreed on, go to the county commissioners and complain about it.
No, 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 I'm saying if the wording changed, if the wording and the intent significantly changes from the draft he's going to send to the attorney, he sends something, and he said he's now going to copy us on that. If the attorney changes that language, and now we don't like it.
We all go as a planning board.
Well, that's what I was going to say, at that point, I think that there would be a lot of communication, and if that happens while I'm the chair of this board, I think that it would be proper procedure for me to go before the board of county commissioners and say, this is our work of copy, this is our last copy, and he changed it, and we're not in agreement with it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying for you to go say this.
That process would happen.
I don't think we'll have a big problem in the middle of that.
I don't think we're either.
Thinking that.
It's apple and orange. But you are a little bit silent.
I think for all of us, we need to be sure that we keep the draft.
I'm sorry, Liz.
One faith will get you killed.
The next thing that the county, four county commissioners staffed us with, the reviews file, and the map, the kind of note that put everybody together with the beginning of it is our current sign ordinance. After that, we have silver plaque and pound plaque of town idol. We will also be providing you with Haley County. Just not the cause, it's necessarily in those other ordinances that we're aware of that you need to include, not just as a reference point to try to get this information put together where everyone's finding it.
Can we get the VODs?
I want to bring, what we're going to do is, December, we're having our Christmas dinner. January, we're having elections and a transition in January. February, we have our joint meeting, so we won't come back to this till probably March. So you'll be getting, you'll have to tell them to be written there, and I'll assist in the outline that I've been having. And then I'm going to do a presentation coming in March too, so that everybody's in touch.
So you're going to tell us what problems that you think were happening? And who's the sign source for the officer name?
Yeah. That's a surprise.
I don't know how to answer that.
Because Lamar would have got mine. In January, January the 17th is our scheduled meeting. It's, at that meeting, the first item of the agenda will be to elect a new chair and last chair, then that meeting will last after that, however long that takes, about two and a half hours, so kind of be prepared for a little bit of a lengthy meeting.
January 17th?
Yeah.
Is it going to be at four?
Yes, well, that's where I'm given at, is given the fact that we're going to, what we've got to conduct, and then two and a half hours, then it's four o'clock, anybody wants to be here, there's, anybody want to come earlier or later, what, four o'clock part of it? Somebody not okay at four o'clock? That meeting, that two and a half hour will be, will consist of just general responsibilities of what the planning is supposed to do, and what their task, what they can do legally, and what they should be doing.
Both of them are here?
Yes, sir.
Get up, sign it. It's been up for about a year and a half now, ain't it? You lay it to death.
Been up since Derek started.
What's the February date?
January, January.
So I got the January.
Our February meeting is the third, Thursday and February. Right now, tentatively, March is the 21st, that's our joint meeting, commissioners, and we're sort of leaving it up to them to find out. Yes. One other quick thing. Top of several, several of the county commissioners, when it's played, and heard nothing but good stuff, they're very happy with the planning board, and people that will, we know, get the subdivision done, and the compliment that they will come up with some good recommendations for the side of it. And I just want to say thank you to everyone, and for everyone's effort and time, and again, welcome, Marty. I guess that, I'm mocked. Anybody got anything else?
I got one question, or just to clarify, to my understanding, what I hear here is the next meeting that you have at four o'clock, but in fact, you're going to send back to five, five o'clock?
I think that's, we have to stop that. I mean, we moved these up to four o'clock because of the length of them, but the original, I think the original template was at five o'clock, is hope we get, hope here, we have a very successful.
I understood, that's true. As I said, I would come to the liaison today, I just have to be, I don't know if it stopped then, but if there were to be something to be changed, I'm just going to send out the letter to all commissioners, but I think we should probably send it out anyway, before it's changed. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for joining, Mark.
I appreciate it.
Nice to hear you, John. Sir. On the table?